In compliance with Chapter Two, Chapter Two Thirty-One Public Law Nineteen Seventy-Five entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this board meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in notice on January seventh, twenty nineteen. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices mail to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertising the Nutley Sun and Starlet on January seventeenth, twenty nineteen, posted on the district website. This is official meeting. Do you rise for this slide? Can we have approval in a minute, please? All in favor? Any correspondence this evening? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Judy Blazer, for the start of our presentations on the strategic plan.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for being here. This is one of the most important things we do all year. Tonight, we're going to be reporting on our Year One strategic plan goals and talking about our Year Two goals and action items, as well as looking at our new district and board goals that are on the agenda for approval tonight. It is a presentation, so board members, we're going to go in the audience as well. But I do want to take a moment and acknowledge our leadership team that's here tonight. You're going to hear many of them presenting. But just a few shout-outs to Karen Greco, our Director of Communications, who pulled the presentation together for the four groups and is the communications liaison for two of that areas. Janine Lozzi-Solo, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Pre-K to five, Ken Vania, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, grade six through twelve. They've worked with each of the four strategic planning areas to help with tonight. And again, our full leadership team. I know not everybody's speaking, but I'll just go around quickly. Who I can see, I should have worn glasses. Doug Jones, Washington School Principal. Tracy Egan, Middle School Principal. Brooke Benavides, our Coordinator of English Language Arts. Pre-K to twelve, Leanne Martin, our Coordinator of Math, pre-K to twelve. Jackie DeBoer, Vice Principal from our middle school. Mr. Demas Williams, our Principal from the middle school. High school, yeah, I just made you middle school with Tracy. I hope you don't mind. It's not a big deal. No, no problem at all. And I literally cannot see at all. Helen, I see Helen. Doyle Moreno, who's our Director of Special Services. Meredith, is that?
Meredith.
Meredith, Meredith Perkins, our Coordinator of School Counseling. Lori LaGuardia, Principal from Spring Garden School. Lorraine Ristell, Principal from Lincoln School. Jess Soja, our Coordinator of Integrated Technology. Come back to this room. Dr. Riley, our Coordinator of Fine Performing and Practical Arts. Mr. Joe Dwyer, our Coordinator of Social Studies, pre-K to twelve. Jo Miteria, Vice Principal at the high school. I don't think I missed anybody who put on my glasses today. Got everybody? Thank you all for being here, and again, you'll hear from them as we talk about our four different focus areas for this evening. Let's move down and get the screen set up and get the PowerPoint set up. All right. So, this evening, I'm going to kick off the presentation talking about the strategic plan update. Last year, in August, we gave you the first year's goals and action steps. And at that time, we were fortunate to have with us Dr. Vala Guerra, who's with us again this evening. Dr. Guerra, not only is he a former Commissioner of Education for the state of New Jersey, he's worked with Nutley on a variety of projects, including consulting on both of the strategic plans that have been put together for Nutley. Tonight, I'm really proud to have him here because this leadership team, as well as board members, community members, and students have really spent a tremendous amount of time looking at our overarching goals for the five years, looking at first-year goals and action steps, and coming together to develop the second-year goals and action steps. We haven't changed what we value in Nutley. What we value or challenge is that foster curiosity, growth, and confidence. Actually, through next slide, do we have a paper? Oh, thank you. You can see the other five bullets for yourself, but these things that we value, integrity, safe inspirational communities, respectful, supportive, independent citizens, persistent, collaborative, open communicators. Those things haven't changed, not in the first five-year plan, not from this second five-year plan. And those things we value really have helped us not only find our strategic plan focus areas, but our district of board goals. The mission statement for the district is a critical piece of what helped us develop these focus areas. Do we have? Here it is. This is the mission statement. Not only is it prominently featured in the strategic plan and on the district website, but we do try and refer to it and make sure that what we're doing is reflected in the daily work of the district. The vision statement for the district really gives us a guiding focus overall. It goes back to that original vision. And when you read some of the keywords, sustainable, integrated, efficient, looking at measurable growth, productive, self-directed citizens, pursue excellence, rigorous, standards that foster an ongoing pursuit of excellence. These are the things that really guide us as we go on this journey and set our goals. During the process of the second strategic plan, we started with a survey in March of two thousand eighteen. Five focus areas were actually developed through that survey and the community meetings that followed. The four that you see here, configuration and infrastructure, curriculum and programs, health and wellness, safety and security, really became the four focus areas. The fifth area was communication. Communication was integral to each, and therefore, we had a communications liaison to each of the focus areas. And communication became part of each of these strategic plan action teams. I'm going to ask that the configuration and infrastructure team come on up first. I think Tracy Massegen's presenting, right? For configuration and infrastructure, Leanne, you too?
Just hanging out.
Just hanging out? All right, just hanging out. And they're going to talk to us a little bit about the five-year goal, the one-year goal, what we're doing in year two, and action steps.
Thank you. Our five-year goal is to align the district's pre-K to twelve. Previously, with our strategic plan, we, for our first strategic plan, we were operating as seven different islands. We wanted to make sure that we came together as one unit for the students' experiences, regardless of which elementary school they went to, they would have the same experiences moving through from pre-K to high school. During this strategic plan, our first year, we spent time researching best practices at the varying different grade levels. This is our team that works well together. Sorry, it's going fast. What we did this year was work with the sixth grade. Ideally, sixth grade, we would want to have sixth grade here, the middle school. And since that wasn't, we weren't able to do that, we looked at different ways of trying to break the middle school down to sixth grade at the elementary schools. We ran into some difficulties doing that, and what we found was the best way to, we couldn't break the middle school model, but we could departmentalize in language arts and math. So we looked into how to do that best at sixth grade. We also looked at how to optimize the time that we do have with our students. The rotating drop block schedule at the high school provided a block of lunch hour, and we were looking into ways how to best support our students and maximize the time at the high school. And one of the things that we were able to do at the high school was a structured study hall. We identified students who needed extra support and optimized time during their structured study hall so that they would have a teacher with them to help organize them and give them extra help, make sure that they were staying on task and using their time wisely. Year two, we plan a little bit forward to continue researching best practices at all the different grade levels. We're going to continue to look how to best optimize the time that we do have with our students. I can speak for the middle school in particular. Forty-six minutes is a very long lunch period. If there's a way that we could optimize that time, either reduce the lunch or offer more instruction during the lunch, that would be fantastic. We're going to continue to try to support students at the high school. And the sixth grade will move to departmentalization at all five elementary schools. And next up, we have Brooke Benavides.
Good evening, everyone. The five-year goal for the curriculum planning, the team is looking at existing programming offerings and also the process of how we develop curriculum. And that played into our Year One goal, which we presented at last August, that we could measure the efficacy of the review process for all programs of district, including both curricular, co-curricular, and academic, as well as non-academic program. The team. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a little loud. The team. Ms. Benavides, Dwyer, Mr. Pyro, Dr. Riley, Dr. Shoah, and Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Williams of the high school. Thank you. And then Mike Carney is our communications, Lisa Dancheck-Martin is our board. Our Year One action process, it was a learning year for this, so we had to develop language for the survey. If you've ever written a survey, you know that you want to try to get back valuable data, so you have to word properly, and so that took us a little while. We had input from staff, students, students and community members. Then we got the information back, and then it was, what do we do now? We looked at the survey results, and that's going to move us to the Year Two goal, to our Year Three, Four, or Five. So we've got the survey out, and the big piece with all this is communicating out what we're doing. The curriculum process goes on, no matter, no matter who's looking. We're doing that all the time as educators, but now we're going to communicate it out more. And I think the key piece here, you see the bifurcation in our goals, is what are we doing with our co-curricular and our non-academic programs?
Good evening, everyone. Brooke Benavides, Language Arts Coordinator. So just to talk a little bit about our Year Two goal, I do want to just step back a second and talk about our previous strategic plan. So in the previous strategic plan for curriculum, we established a five-year program review process. I will tell you, having gone through that process, it is extremely systematic, thorough, and it has allowed us the opportunity to really delve deeply into what we're doing well, as well as open our minds to what we can improve upon as we look forward. We're always striving towards improvement, and it's really not just once every five years. It's every year as we're looking at our curricula and evaluating what we're doing. So to bridge this and deepen a little bit of the work that we've done since last time, in Year Two, and I will just read the goal to you, it says, "By June twenty twenty, the Curriculum Programming Committee will establish a process for measuring the efficacy of district programming and communicating curricular updates consistently." So to break that down for you a bit, for programming, up to this point, we have not had a process for programming. We have only had a process for evaluating curricular content areas. So part of the goal in Year Two is going to be to say, what is our current process for program review? And can we use that to evaluate any of our programmatic offerings, or what programs would that be? In addition, what additional components might we need to add to this process? And how might it look differently, being that we're not evaluating curriculum, we're evaluating programming? So that's the first piece of the goal. The second piece of our, actually, the action steps for our goal is to communicate curricular updates within the survey. Several community members, sometimes even staff members in different content areas, weren't really sure what we were doing with the curriculum. So we are trying to figure out, how can we determine what needs to be revised? And how can we communicate that out in a systematic way? So we're really going to be solidifying what the expectations are for sharing curriculum and determining how that might be posted via the new website. And next, we have health and wellness, Meredith Perkins and Jackie DeBoer.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jackie DeBoer, the Vice Principal of LA High School, Level One. Then Mr. Teras, the other.
And I'm Meredith Perkins, the Coordinator of School Counseling. Tonight, we're opening you our presentation on the Health and Wellness Committee. It's something that we're both extremely passionate about, as well as our community members. I don't know if you're aware, but there is a current, I don't want to use the word crisis, but if you were in our office on a daily basis, you would see what we're up against. And it really is a crisis, and we want to address it. We're done being proactive, we want to be proactive. So the first thing we wanted to discuss was our final year goal. So by June twenty twenty-three, the district will create, establish, and annually evaluate programs and policies that support the health and well-being of our students and our staff. There is a need to increase how we, as a district, address student and staff health and wellness issues with a focus on mental health. Our team then decided that our first step should be to research district health and wellness and social and emotional programming already in place at each of the secondary schools. We knew we wanted to get an accurate accounting of what we were already doing and what was already successful.
So these are the current members of our health and wellness team, as well as many community members that have really taken an interest in this committee, and we are overwhelmed by the support that we're currently receiving. So these are some examples that, after sending out a survey to the coordinators and principals and other administrators about what's currently going on in their buildings, what currently is going on at each grade level, elementary as well as secondary. Some of the highlights that we wanted just to mention, for example, org yoga days, random acts of kindness at the elementary school, as well as at the secondary level.
I mean, there are many positive, exciting things going on already in the district. We have a lot of very enthusiastic, passionate individuals that take these things upon themselves and have new ideas, and it's really exciting and encouraging. One of the things we did at the high school this year was our first emotional wellness series for parents. We believe that education is one of the first steps. Knowing more about mental health reduces the stigma about talking about mental health. So that's something we want to look to continue.
Because as much as we want to make this a positive change within the school community, we've realized that without the support of community members, we can't actually make a change. Without reducing the stigma of mental health and wellness, we need everyone on board. So you all believe that the more education that we can provide for community members, hopefully, the more buy-in we'll get from the community members. In addition to, you know, all the positive things that we're doing for our students, we wanted to also mention that we're huge believers in making sure that our staff is being supported as well. Because if our teachers aren't healthy, if our administrators aren't healthy, they can't be the best. And if they're not the best, then how can they provide the best services for our children? So we need to also make sure that we're including that as part of this piece to make sure that everyone's included, and if everyone's healthy and mentally well, then we can accomplish everything we're looking to accomplish on academic level. So, for the first year, we met with teachers, parents, and community members to discuss the five-year goal. We surveyed principals, building leaders, and coordinators to identify effective program that is already taking place. And like you saw in our PowerPoint presentation, we have so much going on here. What we wanted to make sure is that, not only are we identifying what's working, but we wanted to make sure that now we're consistent amongst the seven year olds. So we discussed the benefits and effectiveness with the administrative team, and we're trying to foster more of a collaborative approach than just having, oh, this one teacher at Spring Garden is doing this, and this one teacher at the high school is doing this. This is what we did on our last faculty meeting. Well, let's be consistent. So we make sure that everyone, K to twelve, is getting the same message. And then based on our data, we want to formulate a two-year goal and actually progressive plan, which I believe.
Our Year Two goal is to analyze data and establish a framework for healthy students and staff. We're going to collect both qualitative and quantitative data on program effectiveness and obtain additional input from stakeholder groups such as parents and students, and then utilize it backwards designed to develop new programs and services based on our established framework.
So if you're not familiar with the term framework, we use it a lot in our district in regards to teacher evaluation, and also use it in our competency framework. So what we thought about is, what does a healthy student look like? What does a healthy staff member look like? And we want to really identify what was included in that framework. So when we are assessing, like, how many risk assessments are we making in a day, or a week, a month, or a year? How many kids are being bullied in our schools that we're filing hits against? You know, how many times are staff members taking off days for mental health? We have to figure out why these things are occurring and how we can reduce them so that our school and staff feel supported, so that when they come into our school buildings, they're not only here to be educated, but they feel that they can accomplish all the things they want to accomplish because they're mentally capable of doing that. And that's a huge part of our goal. All right, so that's it. Next, we have Douglas.
Good evening. I'm Douglas Jones, Washington School Principal, and Mr. Veymeister, who is, what's your title? Systems Manager. Technology, thank you. Safety and security. Another public school district has always had a very proactive approach when it comes to safety and security, in each building, both inside and out. For many years, continual review, revision, and our plan has taken place to ensure the safety. Recently, we identified an important element of our strategic plan, and the district's stakeholders developed and set a five-year goal, known as the five-year goal for safety and security. The main thing is to ensure that all schools are safe and secure. Members of our safety team, it is important to note that Board Member Scolera has been working on developing a program for safe schools for many, many years, long before this became a strategic plan for Nutley. And his guidance and expertise has really brought insight in some of the best practices that we have been implementing for a long time. Other districts are catching up. So the team developed action steps based on the evaluations of various entities. As you know, the Department of Homeland Security, local law enforcement agencies, and the Department of Education evaluated all of our schools. Many action steps and the progress in Year One are the result of those evaluations, the result of feedback, the result of implementation of best practice to ensure safe schools. It's important to highlight a few of them here. One of the things we focused also on this year and for next year is student education and awareness, including safety procedures in the curriculum and signage throughout the buildings and the district. We look to expand that for the coming year. Also to communicate the program and successes of the district and to the Nutley community. Year One action steps. A review of Year One shows substantial improvements in multiple areas. Some of these areas are public information, and some are not. And then, as you can understand, some of the most vital safety and security measures we have are not open to the public. This review also shows that the safety and security strategic action plan remains a primary focus for the district. Our ongoing goal is a continuation of our five-year goal, and that is to provide safe and secure schools for all of us, students, staff, community members, by implementing those best practices. Create that safe learning environment for every student. And we continue to evaluate that plan and that goal on an ongoing basis. The district will continue to provide safe and secure school environment, and we will continue to look at those protocols. The Year Two plan includes continual development of the see-something, say-something philosophy, and that will break down into our instruction. Counselors and teachers will be talking about that in the classrooms to help students understand that they also have an active role. Ground and facility improvements, rental security requirements, a fulfillment of Alyssa's law, which many of those facets we already had in place. And finally, the development of the confidential priority list for safety and security for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, and it's extensive. There are many things we want to do, and there's a lot more that we can do. We will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. You did a wonderful job. I do want to just say with safety and security, there was a two-slide list up there of all of the different action steps that got accomplished during this year. And again, a lot of those are not visible to the public. You know, when you, when you talk about, you know, all buildings having secure entrances, they're not all directly connected to the main office. Or there's no entry without an appointment barring an emergency. All bathrooms in the buildings are locked automatically during lockdowns. Our security officers are reinforcing rules for events, visitor appointment rules. We have the on-voyant review during and after all-secure drills. All district staff, all public safety staff gets those texts. And again, we've communicated those, Mr. Jones talked about this. We've communicated those through regular updates to the community, at board meetings, letters. We send out separate communications through the police. All of those kinds of things make a difference, even if they aren't a hundred percent visible. All of those kinds of things make a difference, even if they aren't 100% visible. Our strategic plan, our five-year strategic plan is, as Mr. Morris said, as Sir Jackie said, the framework for our focus areas. We have the four focus areas, and then what happens from there is the development of district and board goals. Those district and board goals, along with the strategic plan goals, are communicated to our whole staff, our leadership team, our instructional and non-instructional staff. All of those staff members developed individual goals, one or two goals, that are rooted, grounded in the district and board goals. We had a board retreat on July 10th. July 10th. It was a public meeting, and in that public meeting, Charlene Peterson, our field service rep from the New Jersey School Boards Association, did facilitate the board's self-assessment. Each of our board members did a self-assessment, a guided self-assessment of their roles and responsibilities as board members, as the effectiveness of the Board of Education here in Nutley. They moved from that board self-assessment into the development of district and board goals for 2019-2020. Those are on the agenda tonight for approval, and we also want to make sure that the community is aware of what the Board of Education, as well as the members of the cabinet collaboratively developed for us to be working towards for the coming year. So first of all, the district goals, these are the four goals that are on the agenda for approval. By June 2020, we'll use multiple data sources to drive instruction, closely monitor curriculum, new programs, and district scheduling to foster professional growth and help improve student performance. This, of course, also includes staff professional learning. It includes our community programs and what we discussed as far as program review. By June 2020, analyze data and design a comprehensive pre-K-12 approach to student staff health and wellness, resulting in a positive climate and culture for all. This is the second year for this goal. It coincides with the second year of our strategic planning goal in health and wellness, and, as you heard, incredibly critical for us to be proactive when we're looking at mental health and wellness, especially in the context of all of the other aspects of the district. By June 2020, communications will be enhanced between all stakeholders and district partners. That district partners is a clinical piece that was added this year to really make sure that our focus is not only parents, students, teachers, staff, but to include our community partners. We do work with so many organizations in town, so many different groups, so many different people who are supporting the school district. We wanted to make sure that that communication was extended. And finally, by June 2020, the district will collaborate with local, state, and national organizations, as well as utilize internal resources to evaluate current procedures and identify new methods of security while continuing to promote the philosophy of see-something, say-something. This, again, is an extension of what we've been doing with safety and security. We've had the wonderful opportunity to be on the cutting edge, to be honestly on the leading edge in a lot of areas, and now we have the opportunity to continue to move forward with some of the new learnings that we have. We have board members that have been attending safety and security training. We have our internal staff, Mr. Ferrara, as well as our safety officers, myself. I became a certified safety officer this year. And with all of those new learnings and best practices that we're able to glean, not just locally, not just in New Jersey, but nationally, and looking at different funding sources, we are hoping to bring more of those here to the Nutley community. Danny, can I ask you to talk about the Board of Education?
Okay, so similar to what the district has done and the administrators do with their process, part of the July 10th meeting was for the board to also sit down and put together goals that we worked towards throughout the course of the year. We set four goals along that, you know, we'll continue to work on and challenge ourselves to meet with the help of Dr. Blazer and the rest of the administrative staff. But the first goal, similar to what we had in our goals last year, was by June 2020, to continually address the overcrowded needs of facilities and safety and security. That's been an ongoing issue for us. We've been trying to get ahead of the curve, being proactive in how we're addressing the population numbers that we're experiencing, and we need to continue to have that open communication to the public. So hopefully, as we go through this year, we'll set separate times specifically to engage in those conversations with the community. Number two, by June 2020, the O E members will ensure that the community understands the district budget process and enhances two-way communication engagement. Many people this year, we had to put together a budget committee to really go through virtually every line of the budget because we were facing challenges with the 2% cap. How do we still provide the education that's expected in this community and still be able to do it with a 2% cap? And so this year, we did have to exceed that cap to a majority hope. And so, you know, part of this is we really need to continue to communicate with the public of how important it is that we continue to progress in education and continue to deliver what the community expects us to deliver in the most efficient, cost-effective way. June 2020, the O E will help the Nutley community understand the key roles and responsibility of the board and its members. We've worked really hard over the last few years, talking about showing the command and how important the process is, and that, you know, sometimes just following the chain of command actually gets things done faster than circumventing that process. So I think it's important for us to make sure that the community understands exactly what our role is in oversight and policymaking. And then we are, at the end, the last line of defense of the community if, in fact, it can't get resolved, it needs us. So we're going to continue to work on different ways to communicate that out to the public. By June 2020, the O E will ensure proper policies, processes, and resources to achieve district goals, all through the lending, financial, and sustainability. So again, we are a policymaking board, and we have taken a lot of time trying to update all of our policy procedures. And, you know, we do our best to make sure that we're bringing all of our policies up to date with the goal that will be, hopefully, within the next year to year and a half, our policy books will be completely updated. And our goal at the end of this is always to make sure that we're delivering the best level of education from an oversight position for the most affordable cost for the community. Thank you.
So again, thank you to everybody who's participated in setting these goals at every level of the organization. It really does take the full team to be able to come to a shared mission and vision, to come to shared language that we can all get behind and feel invested in, that we can all participate in and set our own personal goals for, whether they're board goals, district goals, or our own goals, as we move forward during the school year. I do want to ask if there are any questions for any of our action committees, for any of us, on any of the goals, including the goals that are up for approval this evening? Any of our other, you know, we have board members who are in the committees, we have Dr. Ferrara, who was here as part of our original, like I said, two planning sessions. Anybody else want to make any comments? No? No? Then thank you so very much. We don't have any other presentations for this evening, so we can go back to the top.
Once again, on behalf of the Board of Education, I just want to thank the administration again for putting the presentation together for this evening. You know, you are the heartbeat of this district, and we really appreciate that. You are the help of our staff that does an unbelievable job of delivering what they deliver to our children is amazing, so thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Blazer for our superintendent's report.
Actually, the strategic plan is the bulk of my report. I do just want to call to your attention on the agenda under, I think it's under Administration Number 41, the disenrollment of pupils. Finances, sorry. Since March, we've been speaking to you about the re-registration of the fourth and ninth grade students, all fourth and ninth grade students. We have completed the investigation of all of the students in the district who started a re-registration process and didn't complete it or did not respond to that process. And you'll see on the agenda tonight the IDs of the students that are being disenrolled from the Nutley Public Schools for residency. All of the families were given the opportunity to have a public hearing in closed session before the Board of Education. None of the families chose to do that, and therefore, they will be disenrolled as of today.
Thank you, Dr. Blazer. We're going to turn it over to Mrs. Gimmins for our Board Secretary's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The buildings in Groundstead, as well as our maintenance department, are extremely busy this summer, getting all the buildings prepared for September, doing all the thorough cleaning. We have several summer projects that we have undertaken as well. So we're looking forward to their annual kickoff at the end of August, where they will receive some of their right-to-go training, and welcoming everyone back to some nice, clean classrooms in September. In the meantime, the business office is also trying to close out the financial accounting for the last school year, as well as all of the purchases and making payments to all the vendors, as well as starting the purchasing process and setting everything up for the new school year. So things are just humming throughout the district, even though we don't have any students here, for the most part, except for some of our special programs.
Thank you, Mrs. Gimmins. Okay, we have a finance committee, Ms. Wirth.
Yes, the finance committee meeting met on July 16th at 4:30. Number one, Mr. Porigi provided an update on his meeting with the contractor for the high school auditorium. The electricians will be working on the weekend to complete their work, after which the manufacturer will conduct the startup of the new lighting system. The district will be soliciting quotes to deep clean the seats and floors once the scaffolding is removed. The bathroom upgrades outside the hall of the auditorium are almost complete. The remaining plumbing fixtures will be installed next week. Mr. Porigi will be meeting with the trailer company to be brought up to speed on the scope of the work, timeless, et cetera. He also reviewed summer projects, including the hardwood floor refresh throughout the district, cleaning the warehouse, and the installation of equipment for the new higher high school RISE program. Mr. Porigi spoke about his long- and short-term projects, such as providing staff training on improved and efficient ways to clean, and the use of coordinated preventive maintenance plan. Number two, Mrs. Gimmins and Mr. Memora reviewed the July 22nd, 2019 finance resolutions, including transfers, numerous contract renewals, Chromebook lease purchase, as well as the property lease with Norfolk South Railway and the liquid church permanent agreement. Number three, Mr. Memora informed the committee that Pomontonian Food Service has offered employment contracts to all of the existing food service workers. Most of the staff will be returning in the fall. The initial startup transition is going very well. Number four, the committee talked about GMAX testing of the turf tree pruning and the removal and the new concrete slope that would be installed at the front entrance of Radcliffe School to allow for handicap access. Number five, IMAP Agency presented quotes and plan renewal options for the student accident policy as the renewal quote was in the excess of 100%. The committee is recommending a change in the carriers to GTL, as well as a change in the coinsurance and deductible from 100% and zero-dollar deductible to 90% with $100 deductible. Number six, Joe DeCara reviewed the drawings for the staircase design for the two-story trailer at Washington School and the need for a canopy covering. The committee also reviewed the proposed parking lot concept, drawing for the reformed church property, including the pros and cons of an egress onto Church Street. The committee is recommending that the entrance in the egress flows onto Hillside Crescent to save costs, ease of snow climbing, no loss of parking spaces, traffic issues on Church Street, and the potential negative impact on neighboring properties. Our next meeting date will be Tuesday, August 20th at 4:30.
Thank you, Ms. Wirth. We now have a portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation 601, a lot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after others' decisions to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with conclusion before you take the microphone. First person who should be heard, step forward, and we have Mr. Moore.
Mr. President, Morgan Moore, 462 Chestnut Square. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just have a couple of concerns. It took us a long time to get Tom Evans, Commissioner Finness, actually write out the agenda we were creating. And I understand here, on your approval on three, page three, approval of professional development, days traveled for persons. You have several of them that says $0 plus travel. How much was a travel?
It's reimbursement of mileage and tolls.
I understand that, that you're supposed to write it down. I mean, I understand you didn't have to pay any money for the service, if there was, but we'd have to list it as an expense so that at least people understand where the workers go. It took a long time to get Tom Evans to do this, but he eventually got it.
The reason why we don't estimate it is because if it was under, we would have to revise every single resolution.
So we can't find out how much a travel is?
I'm sorry, I could hardly hear you.
Yeah, you can't find out how much a travel costs. It's an expense. People might like to see the expenses.
So it's 31 cents a mile, plus the actual tolls. Every individual must submit documentation to support their mileage, as well as receipts for toll or their EZ Pass. And every single request for reimbursement is thoroughly reviewed by at least three individuals in the board office before a check is cut.
I get it, but how much? Could you see my point? I'm not trying to belay you, I'm not trying to give you a hard ride. Did you say there's no expense?
So, Mr. Moore, so I'm just, what this is, the academic committee gets all of the professional development requests, filter requests. They have to be approved in advance, all right? So what Mrs. Gimmins was saying to you is if we estimated the amount, then we would have to go back and re-approve all of these on another agenda. What actually happens is, these are approved, right? All of these people, you see Mrs. Benavides and Mrs. Johnson are going to Ed Camp in Monroe Township. There's no cost to attend that, and it'll just be their travel expense. So not on this agenda, but on a subsequent agenda.
So not on this agenda, but on a subsequent agenda, when their fees, their reimbursement is submitted for payment, that's when you'll see the actual amount.
It will appear on an expense, eventually.
I'm sorry, can you?
It will eventually appear on an expense.
On a subsequent agenda, so if this professional learning is July 25th, they'll submit their receipts for tolls and miles for reimbursement, and then that will be reviewed, and then it'll be paid on a subsequent agenda.
Thank you. I do have one last question. It's on page five, top of the page. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, page, page four, I have five. Yeah, that's the approval of the mentoring program. Is that an mentoring program that you pull a document? Page four, I have five.
So the mentoring plan is something that gets submitted to the state and county every year. It's what we do to mentor our new teaching staff, and it's our plan for providing training for the mentors and our new teacher orientation. Mr. Urbana and Miss Loco Solo right behind you prepare the statement of assurance to the county. They work with our local professional development committee and our school improvement teams to develop that. Do you want to talk a little bit about the process?
No, I just want to know why you, is this a really, oh, this is, this is, it's not questioning.
It's a statement, it's just a statement of assurance. We can certainly review it with you, or they can share what it is. It's online.
It's online?
Yep.
So I want to find it. If I didn't come here tonight, I would have to know to go online to find this.
Well, no. So, again, Ken, or Janine, can you please talk about the statement of assurance?
Statement of assurance, it's certified at the county. We just certified at the county that we have a program that meets the criteria in our administrative code. And yearly, we have to certify before September 1st that we have that. We have a handbook, it's about 15, 16 pages. We ran it all about three years ago. That can be made available.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on a resolution I had at this meeting? See you done. Mr. Dancheck, Moore, would you take academic, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to approve resolutions 1 through 5, Ms. Wirth.
Discussion. Roll call, Mrs. Cruz.
Mrs. Dancheck, Moore?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski? Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarah? Mr. Fungisella?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski, would you take administration, please?
Mr. President, I approve each resolution, 1 through 5.
Discussion. Roll call, Mrs. Cruz.
Mrs. Dancheck, Moore?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Uh, yes, of all, except I vote no on number three.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes, 22 and no to three. Oh, yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Fungisella?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo, would you take finance, please?
I move Finance Resolutions 1 to 41 at three.
Seven.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, I'm not really discussing, all clarification. Number 38, this was my clarification, it may be the public. So, I voice to, I think they know it, that these are children that we send out of district. There's a summer program, extended summer program, that we send these children out of district. Over here.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Cruz.
Mrs. Dancheck, Moore?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Uh, yes, except I abstained on number five.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire? Mrs. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Fungisella?
Yes.
Ms. Clark, would you take personnel, please?
I approve Personnel Resolution Number One.
Discussion. Roll call, Mrs. Cruz.
Mrs. Dancheck, Moore?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Fungisella?
Yes.
Would you take policy, please?
Yes, Mr. Clark, I approve Policy Resolutions 1 through 2 of Stephen. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Mrs. Cruz.
Mrs. Dancheck, Moore?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo? Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Fungisella?
Yes.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on whole school-related matters. Our regulation allot 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign this conclusion before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard be step forward?
Rowley Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. President, I do have this concern. Two recent articles appeared, one was that, I believe it was 67 teachers terminated statewide for ethics violations. And another one is that Governor Murphy just signed that all students have to go through sexual harassment classes. My concern is, why is Pyrol still here?
Say it.
Why is Pyrol still here, Mr. Pyrol? Why is he still here? Because my concern, Ms. Blazer just gave her a report, she said that the missions statement didn't change for our values. She said that divisions have changed. And you're asking students to be responsible and to be accountable for what they do, but yet you're not. You're allowing this to Pyrol, under civil suit, to conduct itself in such behavior, that should have been fired.
Well, I'm going to tell you, Mr. Moore, that this is a personnel issue, unfortunately, you cannot discuss. You stated, you stated an individual's name three times. We cannot have a discussion about personnel matters, I'm sorry. If you continue down the path of discussing this particular individual, I'm going to ask you to please sit down.
Okay, I apologize. The athletic director is still here, and is subject to a civil capacity, seven. Now, my question is, where is this at? Where do you draw the line? I was saying, the state of New Jersey is taking this very seriously. Obviously, Governor Murphy's taking it seriously, but nobody on his board is taking it seriously.
Again, we cannot discuss that issue.
You can't. You cannot absolutely discuss why this individual is still here under a civil suit.
Cannot discuss it.
Okay, but the people do have an opportunity to vote, and I hope you realize that. Because parents, if you're going to sit here and tell me that we're going to maintain our values and vision statements, and you do just the opposite when it comes to personnel, people now have choices, and I think it will exercise them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yeah, just get a little closer to it, that's all. Or just, if you grant it and hold it, it's fine. It's just if you move it too much, we're not going to be able to hear you. That's all.
Barbara Love, John 32 Hampton Place, New Jersey. I just am going to ask a question about the policy regarding bringing pocketbooks to board meetings. Pocketbooks in the board meetings? This is the second meeting that I've been to where I've seen multiple people walking in carrying pocketbooks. After I was told at meeting that I'm not allowed to bring a purse, so every meeting I come to, I carry my things in my hands. So my question is, when I questioned it tonight, I was told that they were told not to be too picky about the pocketbook policy tonight. So my question is, I'm just trying to be clear, is this actually a policy that applies to everyone? Or can I expect at the next meeting to be able to bring a purse?
So the permitted and not permitted policies for all public events, it should be for tonight's event as well. You, thank you for bringing a smaller purse. I've even had to take my purse and put it in the trunk. And it's a really important thing that we're implementing. I will tell you that for tonight, you're correct, you were probably told that, because the person at the door was volunteered tonight. There was a death in the community, and our security person was at the wake. There was not somebody to put out the signs, and because the signs weren't there, we didn't feel that we should enforce it. That's good, the custodian maybe put it out. We did not have somebody to put it out. It was a question. Pouring rain, we erred on the side of being helpful tonight. But it is our policy, it is in place on most nights where we have a public event. You've been here, you've seen, we have somebody at the door, we do have it being monitored, but the intent is to always have it being monitored.
In other words, when you come next month, not to bring a purse?
Keep bringing the small clutch that you have. You're right on track. Thank you.
Next person.
Hey, I'm Nick Binchee, 111 Beet Street. I came here to address an issue I've been having with nursing. Can you hear me? Alright. I'm writing to you in regards to my daughter Natalia, who attends Academy 360, and has a personal nurse due to the fact that she has severe seizure disorder. And I've been having issues with the nursing agency that's been contracted by Nutley, and hasn't been showing up to do their job, so Natalia won't be allowed to go attend school on those days. And it's probably happened about a little over a half a dozen times where Natalia can't attend school due to the fact that the nurses don't show up. And I'm trying to figure out why there's not any substitute nursing or any other contracted nursing agencies that are able to fill it. She's missing out on her therapies, and we have to take off her work, you know, because then she has to stay home all day. Also, there's been a few instances where the nurses were late, and the school was making her sit outside in the parking lot until any of the nurses attended. And my question is, is there going to be any other agencies besides Bayada that will be contracted to rectify this? Because she's missing her daily therapies that she does at her school. And, you know, she really needs to do it. It's probably been about seven or eight times so far, plus five, six, seven times that they were late.
So thank you for taking the time to come tonight and to advocate for your child. I know that you spoke with Mrs. Doyle Moreno this morning, and that you've been in touch with the case manager for your child. They've both been working with Academy 360 to make sure that your child has the appropriate nursing services. I can't speak for that school. Our district has a number of services that we work with, not just Bayada. And I know that both of your case manager and Mrs. Doyle Moreno work very, very hard, not just in Essex County, where there were no available nurses for today, but throughout the state and in other counties, to be able to try and find a substitute at the last minute so that your daughter would be able to attend school. It's the intention, obviously, to implement whatever program she has. Unfortunately, we're not the right people to help, other than to tell you that we do have backup services. Mrs. Doyle Moreno, she's sitting behind you, and again, I know you spoke with her earlier today, is the correct person. I know she'll speak to you even this evening. If you have further questions, she's the right person to address them to.
Yes, I spoke with her, and her and my case manager, Ms. Fredericks, have been working on it for probably since January, but their hands are still tied. But she's sort of been taking the brunt of that, of missing school. If not, you know, if you don't have a teacher show up, do you just tell the kids to go home? You know, there's got to be a filling for that, you know. She can't be missing school. I'm sure if I made her miss school a handful of times, you know, we get a letter in the mail where we need doctor's notes, and we have to provide documentation of why she's been missing. And, you know, just like I said, if the teachers don't show up, I'm sure you get a substitute to make sure that that happens. You don't just send everybody home, you know. She's missing school, and she's already delayed enough as it is, and every minute of therapy counts for her. You know, that's, it's kind of...
And again, that our commitment is obviously to be able to get her the best education possible every single day, and to meet her plan. Without going into tremendous detail, and certainly not talking about your child in particular, in the state of New Jersey, there is a significant shortage of certified nurses and people willing to service school nurses. We have a difficult time hiring them at the schools, and the agencies report a difficult time. We work with the local health agencies, we do have a number of backup agencies. We work with our county, as well as other counties, to try and recruit and retain those nurses. And that's the best answer that I have for you. Again, Mrs. Doyle Moreno is your best resource to be able, especially if you are having an issue or a concern, so that they can advocate for your child with the school where she is attending.
Yeah, I understand that, but there's still, moving forward, how is we going to prevent her from missing school? I spoke with her, so I know what her reply is going to be, you know, that she's working on it, and I know she is, she spoke with me today.
So none of us are part of your child's study team, none of us are qualified, none of us are able to speak to your child's individual education plan. Only Mrs. Doyle Moreno and members of your child's study team can do that. And I'm sure that's very frustrating, when you did come out on a rainy night and a difficult night, but none of us are able to speak to your heart, individual needs or issues.
Yes, okay, okay. But it seems like their hands are tied, that, you know, they only have contracts with certain ones. Is there private nurses or somebody, you know? We battle enough every day with medical issues, the last thing we do is battle enough, you know, to get her proper schooling. And, you know, is she going to get those days made up? I don't, moving forward, I'm lost. They just, it's the only answers I have, you know. I know that the case managers are working on it, but the only answers that I have is, we're working on it. But until then, Natalia's home today. She's home from school.
And I understand that they did yeoman's work, but you emailed Friday night to let them know the situation. Your case manager was diligently all weekend. I was on the phone with Mrs. Doyle Moreno by 7:30 this morning, while they were calling other counties to try and find somebody for your child. They were able to find somebody for tomorrow, but I understand that wasn't needed, that today was the issue. And unfortunately, literally, with all of that work, they were not able to find somebody. And that is all of the information I have, and all I have to share. Again, I'm going to refer you back to Mrs. Doyle Moreno, because she is the correct person to deal with your child's individual education plan and the confidentiality that surrounds that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask a question now, I'm in a situation with our management.
Yeah, I'm going to say, we can't, I mean, you, I'm going to say, if you make a statement, just be very cautious.
I guess the question, this particular school that Doyle is going to, we pay that school to accept his board for the summer? I guess the question, this, this particular school that Doyle is going to, we pay that school to accept his daughter for the summer? So, so I have a... It's confidential. My question is, if we do pay the school to accept these children, then I would hope that the school is held responsible by whoever, since we're paying them to accept children that, without knowing the real prices, I'm looking at the list that I asked about the high, that particular school looks like a student nine thousand dollars almost. I don't understand how they cannot be, that school cannot be held accountable for that situation that took place if, if they're being compensated by us or the parents, someone has to be responsible.
So it's a much longer answer. It's not just the school. They are an out-of-district placement. The individual education plan is written here by the district. Again, I see Mrs. Doyle Moreno speaking to parent, because I would defer to her to explain it to you, and I will do that when she, she's paid attention. So she's, again, the correct person to answer that question for you.
Okay. Just a process question. Do we supply the nurse, or the school district, or pay to supply the nurse?
The school provides the nurse, and we try, and, and we, because it's in the individual education plan, we support making sure that that happens. That's what I was saying.
Okay, they schedule nurses now?
Our responsibility, our responsibility to implement the individual education plan. And the child, and the child is at the school, so the school, when they couldn't provide a nurse, notified the county.
Oh, so they supply the nurse, that's all I want from them.
We, we, we do it. We provide the nurse to the individual education plan, right? We provide the nurse.
Okay, so we, we provide the nurse, not that, not the receiving school?
The school arranges for it. Again, I'm going to defer to Mrs. Doyle Moreno so that you can understand it's not as simplistic as, as you think. It's complicated with contracts, board approvals, resolutions, placements of children in, in different schools. She's dealing with a cat. She's not paying attention to our conversation. It's, I'm going to ask her to follow up with us when she's done.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's kind of cutthroat. Who supplies the nurse? It's either we supply or they supply. I know, but we got to do this.
We have the individual education plan that's written by the district. It's not, it's not...
Individual education plan written by the district for the student. Mrs. Doyle Moreno, while you were speaking, we had a couple of questions. If you could address, we have two questions.
I'm going to talk in general for confidentiality of our students.
No, so this, these are more general process questions. Mr. Kazinsky, first, ask your question, and then...
What was the question, Mr. Kazinsky?
With due respect, we can go with plenty of confidentiality. Unfortunately, this email went out to every board member, and probably went out to every board member's spouse and friends and cousins, and anybody else.
I don't have an email.
I, I just have a simple question. Simple question, no confidentiality rules, no idea.
Thank you.
Who supplies the nurse? Us or the receiving school?
It depends on the individual student. Certain out-of-district placements have nursing facilities on site, others do not. It really does depend on the individual plan.
Okay.
Yes. Anything else?
So if the, if it's in the child's IP for nursing, then the district supplies the nurse?
If it's an individual nurse for the student, yes. There's other IPs that include individual nursing, nursing services on the premises. It depends on the individual student.
Okay, alright.
Anything else? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing done. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board?
Fortunately, I was able to attend the Junior Police Academy Spring Garden. Thank you. Fortunately, this past week, I was able to attend the Junior Police Academy, which was held at Spring Garden School. First of all, I have to commend Detective Mike Labilllo and obviously Commissioner Patraco and the Police Department for the outstanding job that they did. One was our Police Department, Fire Department, First Aid Squad, I grew on and on. It was a fantastic program. If you're not aware, there were seventy-five children in the program this year. They had to turn away twenty-five more children, because they couldn't accommodate them in this Junior Police Academy. It was taught them everything from crime scenes to, as Mr. Moore and I were talking about, applying tourniquets, dealing with children that are hurt, carrying people back, they were doing a chairlift. And, and the children were extremely involved. It's just an outstanding program that I thought went, went very well. Even one day, they had convicted criminals that were escorted into the school by armed police officers, so we should not worry. And the children, and they were children that were criminals, were twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five years old, made one mistake in their life, and I think you might have seen the shows on TV, but to have them teach our children that that one mistake can cost them their, their life. I was now standing program. I was impressed by the program. The graduation was, was outstanding, very professional. We should be proud of what the company, Police and Fire, and First Aid Squad, and our teachers do for the noble school.
Thank you, Mr. Kazinsky.
Mr. President, I have something under my business. I, the last, the board retreat, I was a little confused because we discussed something in regards to the budget surplus, and it became a, a little bit contentious. So I have two questions. What was our budget surplus at the May twenty, twenty, two thousand nineteen meeting that was encumbered and unencumbered? And what is our budget surplus today encumbered and unencumbered? Because this became a, a real point of contention, and I just wanted to clear that up. Do we have that information?
I do not, but we can see if Mrs. Innings does and she does not, we will put together an information folder.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so Mrs. Innings did not have specific numbers, so we will get that information together.
Will you move your conference?
Sure. Will you put it up for the entire board? Any other new business? Whereas the Board of Education, we're discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve. We have now therefore a big resolve that the Board of Education recesses to close executive session at the time, at this time to discuss contracts and property acquisition. Be it further resolved that the results of the board discussions will remain public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. Then we have a motion to go into close executive session. All in favor? Thank you.